Hi there.
We're going to go to meeting your planning board.
Cameron, you can do the. When you introduce.
We're going to start with the governor's message during the pandemic. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 2020 order suspending certain provisions in law. GL, January 20th, in Section 18, Governor's March 15th and July 2nd. 2020 orders are on restrictions on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town of Adams Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. We have posted today's agenda in accordance with open feed law, which included the call and information for the meeting. Despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide the real-time access for the public to participate in today's meeting or recording of this meeting.
I'm supposed to separate my line through my thing so they can hear me talk?
By request, as this meeting is being recorded using the Zoom platform.
See if I'm supposed to do that so they can't hear me too?
The first application is application of LC Square LLC for site plan approval under subsection 125-19 of the Adam zoning bylaw for property located at 173 Holland Ave. Request is for cultivation operation inside the existing building with no retail or public sales in an industrial zoning district.
One request of everybody that is in the audience to state your name before speaking. Because that's the only way we're going to have a record of who's saying what and when. So we opened up for whoever is representing LC Square.
Hello, this is Darren Harris and I'm with Jeff Randall. We're with Hill Engineers. And we're here representing LC Square and Art is on the other screen that I assume everyone can see. I guess we'd like to start by putting the plan up. Can we share our screen? All right, can you guys see our screen now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll turn it over to Jeff to give kind of an overview of what the site is and what we're doing.
Sure, so this is 173 Holland Ave. This is former Berkshire Outdoors. It used to be Powder Shield Technologies. And like Donna said, it's an existing building in the industrial zone. Route 8 is on the west side, right over there. To the, yeah, the south side's Holland Chemical, just to give you oriented to this site. There's a shared driveway that used to go back to Lane's old batch plant. And basically this existing site plan is kind of an existing slash demo plan. We're showing the doors and garage doors and man doors that we're proposing to get rid of. Basically, there's pretty limited amount of site work associated with this project. Removing a few doors and basically we showed a few islands in there to try to get some plantings and dress it up a little bit. I know Art's working on the roof and some of the siding right now. But essentially, the doors that I showed exterior are the ones that were eliminated.
This one?
Yeah, there's quite a few of those. And you can see the two kind of hatched islands at each of the corner of the buildings. And then the one along Route 8, we tried to match, add some green space to kind of match what's going out on, you know, in front of Holland all the way up. You know, by the old James River all the way through. But basically Donna said this is an industrial. There's some residential across the street. But it's kind of a mix in this same neighborhood. The next sheet shows what we're proposing. Not a lot of site work, like I said. Basically, they're going to need a new transformer because these places use quite a bit of electricity. We showed the new planting islands. Existing sewer and water are both adequate. We showed a new enclosure kind of on the north, kind of the northeast corner. Dumpster enclosure, yeah, back to your left a little bit, down a little bit. There you go, right in there. There's a new enclosure right there. And basically, I think they said 12 to 15 on the maximum shift. So we showed 25 spaces striped with "too accessible" to meet ADA requirements. So we had to write some on the north side and we put a few in the front at the main entrance. And then in terms of the plantings, we showed some new trees right along Route 8. We had to keep some out of the overhead high tension wires that cross right there. So we just showed some smaller bushes, kind of right where the hand is now. Right, and then the trees south of that. And then we kind of put some bushes and some plantings at each of the corner to kind of break up the building outline.
So right now, this is all pavement all through?
Yes, it's all paved. And they're going to utilize the same loading dock that was already theirs. We're not adding a new dock or anything. Like I said, the utilities. And we showed the new lighting that was enclosed in the package. Basically, it's all building mounted lighting, so above the doors with some, right, with some lights into the parking lot. But nothing that went off-site. And I think the last sheet just shows the details of some of the things that we were proposing to do there, the new signs. That's just the parking for the ADA sign, that's all. And then new plantings. And you see the chain enclosure, correct?
For the dumpster.
For the dumpster, that's right.
So basically, it's just improving the existing site as it is, really not changing much.
Yeah.
I guess we throw it back if there's any questions regarding the site in specific.
I have one question. Has the area been checked for contamination at all?
So I guess I would leave that up to Art to answer. I don't know if it needs to be or if it has specifically been checked. I don't know if he knows more.
Yeah, this is Art Babayan. No, we have not because this is a solely indoor cultivation, so there was no need for us to do any contamination checks where this is a solely indoor.
What was processed there before? I mean, is there any possibility of anything leaking inside the building?
No, I think before it was a mixed use. Some part of the building was used as the storage. Part of the building was used as the, I guess, mechanical shop and the part of the building was used to, they were selling some stoves and some other materials. Maybe some mixed those.
Yeah, I know that you should. One other question I have is, what about filtration of the product that you're going to be developing to the outside?
Yeah, so in terms of, in terms of the odor mitigation, there are several systems. Well, first of all, it's going to be a closed-loop system with limited exhaust. Also, we will be using what's called bipolar ionization control, which is a plasma-based air system odor control. It uses a plasma air units. It breaks down the gases into electron balls and basically before they, first of all, there's going to be very limited exhausts. It's a closed-loop system and on those exhausts that are going, going to go out, we will be using the latest technology called plasma air systems odor control.
How often is that going to be checked?
So the filters are, the filters that go in there every six months or twice a year. The company that we will be utilizing to do the maintenance, every six months they'll be coming in.
And what is the percentage of reduction from the inside air to the outside?
The reduction there, so like I said, it's almost a closed-loop system. There's going to be very limited air going outside. I cannot see less than, it's probably between 10 and 15%.
Do you have anything to add on drainage for the site?
No, there's nothing specific we need in terms of drainage.
And we're not changing anything. So for pre-development to post-development, you know, by just removing some of the pavement up in the front and adding some plantings, we're actually, would be slightly reducing the amount of stormwater runoff.
And your stormwater runoff goes where now?
It all goes to the very northeast corner. You see the contours kind of all going, that whole side runs right down to that corner.
So you're dumping everything into the hundred-year flood plain?
It's pitching that way, yes. That's how it currently goes. So basically, if you don't even want to say like, no change, there's less of a change because anything from up here isn't heading back because we got the new planting beds. But other than that, it's, it's the same from pre-development to post-development. If they didn't even come to the site, there would be no change. That water is still pitching from the west to the east. So there's no increase in quantity or change in quality.
You're changing, so quantity is going to be the same, but what is the quantity now?
So the quantity now is whatever it is, this heading off. There was no need to run the calculations for the amount because we're not sending any additional runoff off this site.
I understand that, but how do we know that you're, that it's in compliance with the hundred-year flood if we don't know what the figures are to start off with?
Because we're not changing it, so it is technically in compliance because we're not changing anything.
So if there was a violation before, there's still a violation because you're still doing it.
There can't be a violation because it's not, it's pre-existing. So it would be, you know, the Conservation Commission would have issued an enforcement order or something of that nature if it changed.
So do you have, I mean, I don't have any paperwork from COMCOM, so I have no idea if they've even looked at this.
Right, so we're not changing anything, so we don't have, we're exempt from filing.
And your security system?
That'll be another question for Art.
Yeah, so I've provided a detailed security plan. I also had a review with Chief Kelly, I believe.
I have a letter from Chief Kelly saying that you meet or exceed his expectations.
Yeah, so I've also shared a detailed security plan. Based on the regulations from the state's Cannabis Control Commission, we're actually exceeding their expectations. Their minimum, based on this facility, there's about, you know, between 30 and 45 cameras that need to go in. We're actually, I believe, our count is at 67. I had a detailed review about the technical specifications of the camera, the backup systems and all the technologies that we use with Chief Kelly and we're actually exceeding by far what are the minimum requirements are.
Are you planning to have any emergency generators in case the fall goes down?
Yeah, I think that's another question for Art.
Yeah, that's TBD. We haven't finalized that possibly we will be utilizing generators, but we haven't made a decision on that yet.
If so, do you know where you're going to possibly place them?
Possibly along the south, south wall, south side wall. But again, this is a TBD. I don't think. I've been studying the outage, power outage data for this particular location and it's been, it's pretty, been pretty solid. So, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I have a question here. It's the number of individuals you're going to be maybe working there, hiring up?
Yeah, so the total number of employees we anticipate to be around 30, 30, 35 per shift, probably, you know, between 15 and 20.
Okay, that's good. And I see you here where you're going to probably have prioritizing from focus from North Adams. I'm sure you meant Adams.
Yeah, Adams. I mean, this is really, this is, yeah, everything we do is focusing around Adams.
Yeah, I'm sure that's just a business, right?
Are you going to be running three shifts?
So Art, they asked if you were running two or three shifts?
Oh, no, we're, yeah, not three shifts. This is going to be two shifts.
And what are those hours going to be? I see that it's 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, but will it be 7:00 to 3:30 and then there's some overlap on the second?
Yeah, so there's going to be a little bit of overlap for, depending on the role of an individual. And, you know, depending on the time of the harvest. But there's going to be a little bit of overlap for a couple of the roles, but most will be 7:00 to 2:30, 7:00 to 3:00, and then the other shift will be coming in from 2:30 to 7:00.
And what are you dedicated, let's say, truck traffic or deliveries and pickup?
Yeah, so there's not going to be much daily traffic. Again, this would depend on the time of the month, if you will. Typically, this is a wholesale business, so the traffic that we anticipate is probably going to be every other week, every, twice a month, where the single truck will be pulling into our docking station and loading the wholesale material and leaving. So there's not, not, not a lot of traffic in terms of the daily, but possibly twice, twice a month, we anticipate certain deliveries. And then once a month, we will, we anticipate certain product deliveries, soils and other, and other products that we utilize. So there's not going to be much.
What happens to the waste of soil? Where does that go?
Most of the soil is being reused.
You sterilize it or how do you do that?
Yeah, so there's a certain process you, you run it through, if you want to call it a sterilization. Most of the pots are being reutilized.
So will that be done there at your facility or is that done somewhere else?
Yeah, at our facility.
Any other questions?
We have a couple. So going back to the number of employees, how many do you anticipate would be full-time and how many part-time roughly?
Yeah, roughly, two-thirds will be full-time and one-third will be a part-time.
And I'm looking at here under management and operations reviews, number 16. Applicant proposed a filing program for diversity planning, institute a blind hiring policy. I'm not familiar with that. Can you explain that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
What is a blind hiring policy that you indicate on number 16 under management and operations review? Institute a blind hiring policy?
Yeah, I think that's dictated, that that's mandated by the state that we provide an opportunity to certain roles to be available to a blind pool of employees that can apply. For our particular facility, based on the number of roles that are available right now, there's probably maybe one or two roles that can be qualified under that, but again, not of all, not, not of all the roles are finalized. And as we progress through it and, you know, I'll have to see what possibilities are there that we can provide this opportunity to.
Okay, so it is in fact for someone who is eyesight impaired?
Part, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, okay. I guess I didn't understand that, so. May I ask one more? So under recommendations, number five, the final license, after staff has revised a positive impact plan that addresses the following. Donna, is that something you guys wrote, you wrote up?
No, this is from the commission, the Cannabis Control Commission.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are, those are CCC requests that we would need to adjust and file before we get the final license. So those are strictly related to Cannabis Control Commission.
Okay, so it's not this, not this.
He wanted to document, that's one of the things in your requirements, is that he, an applicant document their review by the Cannabis Control.
Okay, I got a question for Mr. Chairman. Could you by chance read Police Chief's then, put then in the record? Is he done, Ron? No. Okay. This is a reference, this is from the Police Chief, Mr. Kelly. This is a reference to my meeting with Art, CEO of LC, well, he put LC Square. This meeting was an ongoing in regards to security plans and measures and the upcoming marijuana alteration business at 173 Holland Ave. I found that they have planned his interns to more than be adequate. Found that they are going to have an over abundance of cameras in both inside and out. The door securities is on par and physical security will be on site. Both video and door systems have the ability to create a history, whether it is in video or print. Key fob security also creates checks and balances for the fobs and where. All issues have over exceeded and everything under presentation. Okay. It's good.
I have one question. And I assume that these plants at some point or another will die and be, need to be replaced. What do you do with waste?
Yeah, we'll be grinding them, grinding the plants and offering to local farmers for free if they want to use that as a compost to utilize. But they will be grinded to very small pieces and then we will be offering to local farming communities.
So they'll be destroying that site?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any corrosive or fertilizers or anything that you're going to be using?
No, not specifically, you know, the soil that we will be utilizing is, CCC has their own regulations on what we can and cannot use.
Okay. So there's nothing that has to have special care of disposal?
No, because, yeah, all of our products, CCC has a very strict regulations on what we can and cannot use. And also all of our product, before going into any stores, will go through independent testing facilities. We will be just obliging with the, with what CCC dictates.
Do any of those records come to the town? Their inspections?
I'm not sure if they come to a town, but I believe they're available upon request. But I can double check on that. If, I don't think they send it by default to the town.
Another question would be fire prevention. What type of systems do you have in place for our employees? Can I catch you up, Garrett?
Yeah, I don't, Art, are you going to talk about fire protection for the building or, you know, whatever he does, he has to follow the building code?
So you have any plans on that yet? Whether it be a fully sprinkled building or not?
Yeah, it will be a fully sprinkled building because by, by code we're required. I met with the fire chief and we've discussed this and it will be a fully fire protected through a sprinkler system. It's regulated, yeah, it's, it's a must-have.
And speaking to the fire chief, he's also indicated that there will be remote enunciators at the doors?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part?
Remote enunciators at the doors?
Yeah, there will be, yes.
Okay.
Do you have any word from the fire chief, Donna?
No. Keep in mind, no, it's not, not required. No, I mean, keep in mind that if the planning board approves this tonight, then Art would have to apply to the building commissioner. That's where their formal review, both building commissioner and the fire chief's review. But, but he's, Mr. Babian has done this all at a time, you know, with the police chief and the fire chief. Um, Mr. Chairman, yes, Hill Engineers to take the plan down so we could.
Yes, could you take the plan down, please?
Sure.
There we go.
Now we have people again. Yes.
I have one other question. Just out of curiosity, do you, where will you be selling your product to? Will it be local? Will it be a state in mass? Do you have customers already or, you know, clients, whatever you call them, please? Wait, no voice, we can't hear you.
Sorry. So it can only be sold in mass. There's no cross-state selling allowed. We have relationship with the stores in North Adams, several other stores in Berkshire's area. That's, those are going to be the clients of ours.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm good. Entertainer motion?
Okay, let me make a motion. I make motion to Grant this application of to LC Square, LC for the site plan approval under SL, as the 125-19 of the Adam zoning bylaw. We're properly located at 173 Holland Ave. The request is for a cultivation operation inside the existing building with no retail or public sales in an industrial zoning district.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye. So move. You gentlemen have it. Was there, was there any?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
They'd be up on the screen. Oh, okay.
Somebody care of the detail or?
They saw somebody, but then they must have left. All right, so continuation. Alright, so continuation, uh we have to look at possible zoning by law changes for the industrial park. To be able to incorporate. Basically marijuana cultivation and sale in the park.
In the park?
In the park.
That's, there's gonna be a store there.
Well, we, we could very well be, but we we we, right now it's not zoned for it because of the industrial park.
Right.
Can you explain that?
So, so the industrial park right now is pretty much forbidden. That type of business in the industrial park. With without the variance. So. Uh, we if we change the zoning bylaws for the industrial park to incorporate that type. We will have any problems in the future because it is an industrial thing, it's probably an oversight first. I'll throw it in. And it's it probably shows an incorporated event because it is an industrial area.
Now, industrial zoning is just for manufacturing, not sales.
Yeah, go ahead, jump right in wherever you want.
So, it it's um, there's industrial zoning and there's industrial park zoning. The Adams Corporate Park is the only location where the IP zone occurs in the town of Adams. When, you know, those of you that were involved in um, you know, preparation and recommending approval of the marijuana by law. I guess to that go back twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, um, I think the thinking was, well, let's see how this goes. It's the wild wild west out there, let's be, you know, um prudent and, you know. Like approve it in industrial, but we di- you know, decided, the the planning board decided to hold off on the industrial park. Even though the industrial park has always been about manufacturing, um pretty much industrial, light industrial uses. The intent being not the heavy messy industrial uses, but certainly you could argue cultivation. Manufacturing of marijuana products like the sabs and um gummies and stuff would be appropriate, so. So now what, after we've had like about three, four years of experience. We're finding there's a lot of interest in, there's two vacant buildings right now in the corporate park, there's one vacant property. Um, as the board probably knows, we do not have much in the way of available land or available buildings. Um, we get inquiry after inquiry about those buildings in the industrial park. So, the selectmen have had, they had a meeting, they wanted to know about, you know, from staff, why? Why wasn't this done and we basically walked them through that, you know, the. Planning board and adopting the bylaw decided to take this a step at the time, now we have a little more experience, we don't have a lot of. Projects yet, um but um certainly there is the desire for these types of businesses. To locate in the corporate park, so.
So would that be like a a a store and?
Well, I.
Maybe a a place like what these guys are gonna do and also have an outlet to sell?
I think that's, that would be the really the crux of the discussion.
Okay.
Personally, I think um you start to get into retail sales, that really deviates from what you would think of as an industrial. Um, so, I I would not recommend that to.
Okay.
But I would.
I'm not, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I I would recommend strongly considering manufacturing um and and cultivation. Um, as, you know, we we can see with um with Art's um Art, Babiyan's um project, it it really is. Um, you know, it's it's a type of manufacturing, yes, they're growing a product, but it's very technical. Um, you know, um so I I think it's very akin to um other uses in the corporate park.
The only concern I have on that is that cultivation, I mean, we we don't know. If the air filtration is gonna work, okay, the like they say it is. So, the only concern I have with doing an industrial park is that you've got more housing around there. And there are neighbors up in arms already because they say everything comes to the east side, it's like a dumping zone. For Adams, you know, I mean, you know, we one one time we had the dump and then we get, we had the solar field and. And there's another solar field that the project about putting in and. Uh, the train going through, people are, you know, were up in arms about that horn blowing all the time. A- and so, the only, the only reserve I have is. To see if Art's filtration system works and it doesn't give it people problems. Because once you put it down there, you've got neighbors in the area and it could, you know, it it could cause uh. People having concerns.
Well, uh excuse me, um had, um, I, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, on one, two, three, four, I think it's five Husick Street. Right, um, they have hemp, which is close to marijuana, right? And they have uh some some marijuana too, being grown there on the two floors, upper floors.
I think that was.
Of course, they're way up there.
Yeah, that's no.
But they never came to us, I don't believe.
Well, it was a hemp, you you know, they tried to do some hemp, but it really never got off the ground and it is.
Oh, it never got off the ground.
That property has now been sold to another entity, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, but I knew the person that was gonna be doing it, he was doing it, and I says, oh, okay, I'm. I didn't wanna turn him in or anything.
Well, hemp hemp is not the same as marijuana.
No, I know, I know, but um, well, and uh, but he was doing one floor of hemp and was gonna do one floor of marijuana. That was his plan for.
I think what you brought up, the odor control is really.
A good, it's good.
Yeah, and so what I would expect to bring to the board, if the board wants to entertain going forward with even. Considering the bylaw amendment is to bring the latest information on that, you know, um, we could even um.
I would, excuse, I would, I would like to see maybe some um information from other towns, maybe have.
Especially Pittsfield, Pittsfield has a large amount of cultivation.
Right.
Facility.
Right, I'd like to see what their reports are, is it causing problems in the neighborhood, you know, cause I know. I think when they were talking about the Sheffield thing that they were doing, that was one big. You know, the neighbors were up.
Yeah, Sheffield Sheffield was an outdoor group facility.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, still, you need to know all the facts before we can say, yeah, okay, we're gonna plot it here and say, you know.
I mean, you're right, I mean, we should look into it.
Any other aspect with this, we we wanna make sure that this, if if we're doing manufacturing and cultivation. That it's an indoor project and not an outdoor project.
Well, yeah, I mean.
But you know, some places.
Industrial park, yes.
But I mean, you're gonna have some, say, a big farm and it's way out.
What's?
Way on the distance, right, and there's no, no, no neighbors, and they wanted to grow it, say. Yeah, I mean, what's the, stop them from coming and wanting to, to 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 try to to do the same.
Where the neighborhood is six plants.
No, you know what I'm saying, because I mean, it does stink, this stuff does, this stuff.
Three times a year, it stinks.
Huh?
Three times a year.
Well, I don't know how many times it smells.
Okay, that was.
I don't know how many times, but I know it stinks.
Yeah, I don't, I'm kinda naive here.
Whatever, when it floods, it's when it starts to get us wrong.
Um, and it's been fifteen years.
Yeah, okay.
I used to sm- smoke it one time, it's been fifteen years for me, but I know one thing, it's stuck. You know, I tried to hide it and I caught it.
Donna, this is what we have in place now, right? So, I guess, uh, Mike, it's been a while since we looked at this, like, what? And and I don't have my my book in front of me, but what is the difference between? Okay, so marijuana cultivator, someone growing.
Correct.
What's marijuana product manufacturer?
So, that is somebody that is doing, you know, like the gummies or they take.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oils.
Right, which when you think about that, that's where, you know, with with the. Um, selectmen kind of asked about it, you know, it's like I have to say, yeah, it's manufacturing. Um, it really is.
Yes.
So, um, I and I told them, the plan, you know, planning board, when we talked about this, it was all a whole new world and. We were just thinking we'd go.
We didn't think it ever been illegal in Massachusetts. Well, I mean, it's gonna be going mass, so.
So.
I mean, you get in.
We, you know, the the discussion that we had about the industrial park, um, we did provide that marijuana independent testing laboratories. We'd had no inquiries about that at all.
Yeah.
And my understanding is all heavily, you know, again, like, um, Art was saying, it's very heavily regulated by the state. Um, you know, so I I doubt they'll have any out here, you know.
So, would would, I mean, I know it's all up for discussion, but the, in the IP, we. For the first two, we have special permits, are, I I mean, are we looking for? A yes somewhere, so it's, or?
I think we're looking for a special permit for the manufacturing and cultivation. That way there it keeps some form of review, right, rather than just giving.
Yeah.
Well, that that would be your program, yes.
Yeah.
Manufacturing, now keep in mind, the manufacturing, that's where they bring product. You know, so they're, the the odor issue, I don't think is, right, it's it's because it's whatever they do to it, I mean, it's dry.
Right, they they cook it or whatever.
Right, and so that's coming.
They gotta cook something and throw it in the gushers.
So, it's just like, you know, so I don't think the odor is there with the, you know, so.
Well, unless unless they do that in the IP, in the industrial park, we don't know.
You know, you don't know about oils, if the oil is stand up.
Right.
You know.
Right.
Oil scene, stop, yeah.
Yeah, such a good thing.
So I think, I think if we if we shoot for special permits for those two categories.
You know, and these other permits are easier to get.
So pass. I think what we're looking for. And still give us some control.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so, I think that's a good idea, I agree.
So, um, would you entertain doing this, I'm I'm just asking the question. But actually doing this quickly so it could go to town meeting, I mean, in terms of the bylaw, it's like basically.
I say put it into bylaws now?
A couple of words.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we we can put a request in, then it's gotta go to board selection.
No, that's already been done.
Okay, so the board selection, so it's us, and then it goes to town meeting for a vote.
So, the board, the selectmen have already passed it?
They've already approved.
They've already, they've, no, it's, the the discussion started with the board of selectmen, they have. Requested you to consider it, the board of selectmen have requested the planning board to consider taking up some amendments.
I think we should, and I think we really should, we gotta get in on this, that's how we're gonna, we gotta get income for our town.
Donna, what you what you doing, things are vacant, there?
Um, so the old um pellet fuel that, you know, Adams Plumbing and Heating have, um, you know, two years ago. Um, uh, Terry Daniel had like, um, a couple of people, a couple of businesses. Inquiring about doing manu- you know, cultivation there and I had tell her, sorry, Terry, you know, we don't, it's not allowed. Um, and then uh M R A Labs, they um, they sold out. Yeah.
Who's that?
That one.
Oh, oh, down the other way.
Yes, yeah.
Next to be able to blow it, basically, they come up.
Yeah, so I had talked to this um, these, this um entity, they, I mean, they had their funding in place, everything. I mean, they were, you know, the real deal and they were all all excited, they had done the site tours, they had the corporate people come for the site tours. At M R A Labs and and I had to tell them, um, I'm sorry, but the bylaw does not permit this, and it's like, so.
Oh, gee.
You know, so that's every year, we've had like, I'd say, three to five inquiries, serious inquiries, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and it's, you know, I think eventually it'll level out, but I've been surprised at how many people are still pursuing, you know.
Yeah, Adams has gotta be known for something.
Well. Well, Art has told me that there is no product out there. He he said that everybody is scrambling and that's why the cost is apparent, I don't know, but apparently great, because there's no product.
Well, for medicinal stuff too, you know, and that's the big thing.
And he wants to move quickly on his, you know, I worked with him for over two years now and it's just, he's very thoughtful. And I think he's gonna do really right by the town, he wants to move here, you know, so it's kinda neat to, nice to see that interest level.
Any other questions?
But this could be put together a public hearing, you know, at your next meeting.
Well, I think you could come up with a, with a. Something and and uh put it in for uh. What she said, I just, I just got a brain fart.
Okay.
It happened, Joe, you guys gotta understand, I I that I had a brain injury. And sometimes when the word, a word wants to come into my head, it forgets, you know what I'm saying? Don't mean I'm a dummy or nothing, it's just, it happens, but I think we should go for that, for the special permit.
Sure, do you need a vote on that?
I think it would be advisable.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to change zoning bylaws on the manufacturing and cultivation. I would really like to hear him about that one, he's good. Long.
What's that?
Yeah.
We need a motion.
I don't know if I know how to handle this.
Just to hold a public hearing to consider.
I make a motion, motion to hold a public meeting or hearing on changing. Our bylaw for IP and I, is it I two? No, uh, IP, IP to uh special permit for marijuana product manufacturer. And marijuana cultivate.
I think, if if I may interject, you don't wanna, you you just wanna have a whole public hearing. To consider amendments to the IP zoning for marijuana.
Just put add to consider the amendment from the uh.
Cause you'll be hearing information and you make a decision. So, that was, we got it, we got them.
We got the group, second, I don't even want to be worried, yeah. We're good.
Do you want to redo, re-say it?
That's.
Go ahead.
Um, Pam, do you have it, the?
Um, well, thank.
The whole the public hearing.
Yeah.
Do you consider amendments?
Member or vice chairman, Chris Minsky, you consider the amendments um.
To the IP zone?
To the IP zone, um.
Regarding marijuana businesses.
My businesses.
Second.
And next.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And, um, so talking about amendments, um, another project I've been working on is Cumberland Farms.
Yeah.
Um, and they are working through the Conservation Commission, they've um gone to um Z B A. Um, for twenty-four hour, um, you know, a twenty-four hour store. Um, so I think they're hoping to come before you at your next meeting, if it would be at the end of May. Um, so, question is, do you want to have this a public hearing and the Cumberland Farms, is that too heavy a agenda?
I get a feeling that the marijuana thing's gonna, it's gonna draw some people maybe. And the copies with them people up there.
It's been very quiet, actually.
Really?
We moved.
No, I I'm, that's we, that companies is a good thing for the, for us, you know.
Well, when is town, town meeting six twenty-one, right?
Right, I don't know if we can make it, so, you know, I'll have to look at the calendar, I mean, if you, unless you're willing, if you're willing for. I mean, if we can meet in two weeks, I know we could make it.
Is there, is there gonna be a special town meeting coming?
There could be, yes.
Well, that's usually what, um.
They usually have them October or sometimes September, but.
What's two weeks, I mean.
The tenth, the tenth of May.
Three weeks. Oh, when would?
Three weeks.
Earliest week, earliest week.
So, let's skip this week, so two weeks from tonight would be May ten. Right, and how much time you need for?
Right.
Because the last, the last number of the month is Memorial Day, so.
Right.
Um, it's actually the, the, oh, so the fourth Monday of the month.
It's in harm's interest in being on your agenda, that's the twenty-four, that's what they stated anyways, there's no.
The third, the, um, the third, in in three weeks from today, would that make it?
This is seventeen, three weeks.
Would that make it?
The sex day.
I think so, I think so.
Well, I mean, I I'm good with either, but down to the seventeenth, I feel.
Anyway, whatever you guys wanna do.
No, she can't do the time.
I'm not accounting with her.
Right, the seventeenth, though, I think, that would be. Right, the seventeenth, though, I think that makes.
Before you consume.
Okay. I agree. It'd be great, okay.
Uh can I also ask something, um is obviously we're talking about zoning bylaw amendments. Um I think I've spoken to you about this some time ago, seems like we have a lot of variances. Um I I don't keep track of all of them, it's just, it seems like to me, in my mind, that after the fact, when I read about them, they seem to be controversial, and I'm wondering if that's something we wanna look at as a, as a, as a board. Um we do our work here, we put the bylaws in place, amendments, you do a lot of work, and then boom, somebody side sidesteps us by going for a variance. I don't know, I don't know what, how the board feels about that, or what we have, I mean, I don't know, um.
I think it's gonna taper down because of the clientele that is on the zoning board now. Eighty percent of zoning issues in regard to variances, probably eighty percent of them shouldn't go through, because they don't meet the criteria. And with the new members on the board, I'm gonna say it's a weird.
Yeah, but that's subject to whoever's on the board.
Correct, it is.
Um could be, so I guess I just feel like we work really hard in getting these things in place, and then whammo, some someone comes around and circumvents us.
We have no control over that, zoning board and and grant variances, and the only recourse in the variance procedure is if somebody complains about it, right, because it didn't meet the criteria.
If if I could interject, though, I do think, um, you know, um we, there was a point there, because if you keep getting repeated variances, that's a good like trigger, like there's something wrong with the bylaw.
Right.
You know, is there a lack of flexibility, should the planning board review that? So I think what you're asking for, Sandy, is more of like, kind of, uh, let's go back with the last several years, where have been the variances? What have they been about, I mean, um we we have um, we have a small grant, forty-five thousand, to do some bylaw work. Um staff has always been petrified of doing a wholesale redo of the, I mean, I've I've in a previous um job, I've done those, and they take two and three years. Nobody remembers.
Yeah, it's too much.
So, but we we've had, um like, there's been, um, I mean, signage, believe it or not, that's that's an issue, like the freestanding signs.
Those are a big thing.
And and those are, I think.
And the animals, we have a problem with.
Like the chickens, like the, like the Adams Community Bank signs, which I think everybody would agree, those are really attractive signs, but they're in.
Still a little.
Because we have a provision, no internally lit sign. So it's, what the the intent was, those hideous yellow plastic signs, but we've gotta fine tune that, so we allow the Adams Community Bank types of signs.
Right.
But not the, you know, so so things like that, um I think with this um grant, we can do precisely what you're talking about, can identify where the variances have been happening, and then does that translate into some?
Yeah.
Yeah, signage is gonna be a big issue all the way around.
I I would love if we could do that.
Just having a, even, excuse me, again, just having a sign, a sign committee even of three people or so.
You're brave.
Well, really, seriously, because sometimes the signs is a lot for, well, I don't know how.
We can throw it into the design review.
Well, well, how, how, how often has the uh ZBA been meeting?
They meet quite often.
Now, they just started kinda getting back.
You know what I'm saying?
Up to full membership.
But the signs has always been a big, a big thing.
Quite frankly, I don't, I I don't want, well, I don't think signs should go to ZBA. If they're going to have a review, it should be this board, you are more into design, you know, you know, I think you know design standards better than the ZB. The ZBA should, I, so that's been one of the things, we've tried to move special permits toward, you know, and there's that a little bit of tension, that's always healthy. So we've been trying to move like the important stuff to uh planning board for um, you know, special permits.
I think internally lit, externally lit, size.
Yeah, you can see now, now, look at the lighting and all, that's all different now, it's all LED or.
Times have changed.
Exactly, so that what we have is obsolete, basically.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't want to honk and talk, uh.
Right.
These are, you know.
So the other thing that, um, and I didn't even expect to bring this up, but the other thing that we're working on is, um, the town is in the MS four stormwater program, that is um implemented by EPA and DEP. And one of the requirements of that program, when you're a municipality and you're in the program, is we have to have a stormwater bylaw. Um so um I, my my feeling is, I'm working on the bylaw, a draft of that now, that meets the um um, you know, the requirements, and I'm thinking, again, planning board should be the body that reviews it. Um conservation, you know, they're very narrowly focused on what is defined in the Wetlands Protection Act as resource area. They don't really look beyond that, where you, as a board, have to look at stormwater, you brought up those issues tonight. So I just think, even though it's gonna be a higher technical thing, I think this board should do it. Um we're putting provisions in there where the applicant would pay for peer review, so you wouldn't always have um the town, you would always have a peer engineer review the calculations, review everything, and pro- provide you with a report and recommendation. So I don't think it's gonna be, even though it's much more technical, I don't think it's gonna be anything that you're not used to as a board already. So, um and quite frankly, we don't get that many, we still don't get that many projects, you know, so it's.
Is that a public hearing thing?
It will be a public hearing, so I I, this bylaw is like, it's a big, heavy duty by, you know, it's a tense bylaw, like, kinda like akin to forty R, where it's multiple pages and all that.
So when do, when do you um hope to have that in place?
Oh, I'm hoping to have a draft of that by June, and then we could start the public hearing process whenever it's good for you, but that would be like a special town meeting, so.
Okay.
Have we had any, have we, we had any interest in the forty R?
Um, we we have a an RFP out for Memorial School, and um we've had interest with that, um it's still out, um proposals don't have to be um in until June fourth, I believe, um and so some are um looking into that. You know, interestingly, some of the smaller developers, like we've attracted a husband and wife team, they were interested in the jump lot, but they missed out on purchasing that. Um they were interested in Memorial School, but they don't know anything about forty R, so, um but but others have said that they definitely would pursue it, so. So I think it's uncertain at this point.
Wha- what's, do you know what's gonna happen in in the Music Street building that got sold?
Um there, he is, um, the um um buyer is uh Mr. Alan Schiffman. He is from um, that, he's down in uh Naples, Florida, I think he's a friend of Mike Means. Um and anyway, um he's, he's in partnership with Jeff Cullen, um but he he is more, like, he wants to get things done. My impression, I mean, Jeff, I, Jeff is moving slowly forward, I mean, I, just as a staff person, I mean, he is moving slowly. But from the town's perspective, okay, all right, I'm getting old, I'd like this project done before I, you know, kick the bucket here. Um Alan, who is, it's, he's about the same age, I don't know, but he's like, let's get this moving, let's get it going, so I'm encouraged, you know?
That that's the front building I'm talking.
The five, five is a small.
Yeah.
Yeah, but so so they're doing it all as a complex, they're working, they're finishing up now their um historic preservation, they have to get approval by MHC because um they're doing um historic tax credits as part of the financing, so. It's, you know, we're looking, I I think it's a sixty million, sixty-five million dollar project, so it's multiple funding sources.
Things are moving.
Well, not yet, but.
Well, things are popping a little bit.
So when do you think we could see something on on the uh variances or that information?
Um I I think over the the next couple of months, you know, yeah.
Okay, I just, if we can get it in the, in the loop.
Yeah.
Are you guys agreeing on that?
Totally.
Absolutely, okay.
Same.
Yeah, good.
Interesting.
Uh, um, I I guess Donna would put together a.
Like an analysis of the, of where the variances, request for variances have come from and where the issues are, and we need to look at in our bylaw.
Yeah, that's cool. And you guys, I'm glad you're still here.
When does our date count for this, the town?
We're good, um I I thought it was the seventeenth.
Okay, you're all right.
Yeah, it's thirty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very big one, it's number one.
Right, so we would do the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth?
Yes. We'll bring cookies.
And can I ask one other thing, this is an old email, but um I didn't go to this, but. Oh, no, this isn't the one I wanted, although it it, there was an email about new housing, new housing holder, I I think it was um.
Oh, is that?
A webinar or something, I don't know, and I tried to figure out what that was, and I didn't.
Well, my understanding is if, um you know how forty R um required uh two-thirds vote with town meeting? They made changes to forty eight, so that um now it would only be a majority, and they made some other thing, you know, the states are pushing housing, housing. So they, there's a whole bunch of things that are coming out of some changes that the state has made, um it's, I I've been waiting for BRPC, typically they'll do like a summary and they'll send it out to the communities, but we haven't seen that yet, but I I imagine something will be coming.
See, you know, like you're having them.
I know.
And then what's up, so I do have, this is an old one too, this is solar siding reform for Massachusetts and Rhode Island, I didn't go, I didn't do that, knew that was a Z that, or a webinar. Everybody know anything about that?
I don't know anything about that, no, I know we're, um, there'll be, um, our project, I, um, you know, the gravel, yeah, Grove Street. Um they have to, the last kind of staff thing that they have to comply with is there'll be a warrant article at town meeting. Um because town meeting apparently has to approve um the pilot agreement, so the selectmen have approved it, but then they, you know, town meeting is also supposed to. So I'm working with um the company um to get that uh warrant article, and then I think, I think they started construction, according to Derek Garner, they started with theirs. One.
Are they still going ahead with the one down the line stream?
No, there's no, in fact, um Art, who you mentioned, um, um he was looking for additional property, and I I told him about the, you know, that was Axosso or Axios, I don't know, that, you know, they proposed a, um, you know, solar and nothing happened there, so for him to talk to Mr. Brudiac, maybe he could, you know, since that's so industrial, so I don't know what the outcome of it is, but he was doing a site visit with them, so. But we haven't heard anything about, you know, and that's been well over a year.
Yeah.
And and look, did you hear anything from the other marijuana guy down at Roundy's?
No, we're trying to track them down, I mean, the last thing we heard from them, again, like probably, that's almost two years now, um is that the CCC told that company, you, you, they had two proposals in, one in Brookline, and one out here, so of course the CCC told them to go into Brookline first. Of course, cause after all, that's a wealthy community. So I don't know if they've just been going, I mean, Art was saying, I mean, he's, he's been very um diligent and um.
This guy was on top of it.
Yes.
This guy was running on top.
So he said, he said that they just really got locked down and stuff, so.
So he knows those people? He knows.
Now, that was gonna be uh.
The other people?
What were they gonna do down there?
Retail, retail.
What we got locked down?
They're gonna sell.
You know, the.
What are they gonna sell down?
With the CCC.
Oh, they're a little different.
Anyway. But, okay.
Okay, that's enough. Uh, can we, you got old business and uh all that kinds of stuff? No older?
Just, just that are all.
No, we are getting old, not older, I just, just last week, I got a, uh, another year older.
Do we have any napkin, man, we're getting old. Motion to adjourn, any new business?
No.
You had me hand up.
No, I was.
Were you just getting older?
He said, motion to adjourn, I put my hand up.
No mail?
No mail, second name, can we uh? Are you gonna be in second, any discussion?
No.
All is a favor, all right, we're done.
Good. Hey, uh, Pam, do you need this stuff? Pam?